Thank you so much for the invitation to present to council this morning. I'd like to mahi to the mayor, also to Tyron, our local councillor, and to Daryl, one of our board members for Chomley Children's Centre. I have the privilege of being the GM at Chomley, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about how we started, what we're doing today, and Michael's going to finish with the exciting statistics and data. So Chomley Children's Centre was gifted to the children and families of Canterbury in 1925, so for 98 years we just celebrated our birthday recently this month. We've been providing respite to the children, tamariki of Canterbury. He did this in memory of his late wife. We've had various models of care over our 98 years. Originally, we don't have these, have orphanages anymore, but it did sort of morph a little bit into that in the 20s, 30s and 40s, but primarily with the support of the local house department. Children were sent to us to recover from illnesses or if their parents were having some sort of medical problem or procedure, sorry, the children were sent to us to spend some time with us. And the matron in those days with a very small team would have up to 30 tamariki. Today we operate with two in takes a week, Monday to Thursday, Thursday to Sunday, 24/7 service, fully staffed, and we have on average 16 to 17 tamariki per stay. We are a 23-bed facility, and we are 70 to 80% community funded and 20 to 30% government funded. So charity fundraising is a really big thing for us, and we have only managed to continue to provide this incredible respite service because of the generosity of Canterburyan people and the businesses associated. So we continue to provide free respite care to all of the tamariki that access our services along with in more recent years outreach. What that means is that we've been able to work with the caregivers or parents of the tamariki to support them to grow stronger, learn other strategies to support them with parenting, and you know, effectively to become really successful parents. We have some amazing stories of, from tamariki that have now grown and come back to us and give us some amazing stories of their experience with us and the value and the importance of being able to have that time with us. So we provide planned regular respite and emergency care. Planned respite can look like a child coming to us every six to eight weeks for up to seven years. So our tamariki age out when they turn 12, normal entry age is five, but for emergencies we will take tamariki as young as three.
Awesome. So I'll just quickly jump into some of the statistics that we had from our past financial year, so 2021, 2022. So in the past year, 331 tamariki from 267 whanau accessed our services. Of that, 296 were based from Christchurch City. All of those tamariki equated to well over 2,800 bed nights and more than 22,500 meals. Our kou mahi and our tamariki spent a lot of time out in Orta Tahi and Tafaka Opor with roughly 420 resilience building trips, which were designed to give them the chance to experience things they might not get to experience at home. And like Tony alluded to before, we run on a budget of approximately $2.5 to $3 million, and we're 70 to 80% community funded. So Canterbury's charity really does rely heavily on the support of its residents. We'll take a quick look into where our tamariki are from. So as you can see, of those 296 tamariki based in Christchurch, approximately 40% are based in the eastern suburbs, with the largest group coming from Adunui. We found that Adunui, Brindwood, Bromley, Shirley and Spraydon were our largest suburbs. Breaking down the demographics, approximately 35% of the children accessing respite identify as Maori Pacifica, and then a further 70% that access our outreach services, identify as Maori Pacifica. We have a very strong breadth across Christchurch, it's not just in one area. Christchurch South has another strong number of clients, but that's essentially where we're based from. We'll quickly power through to the end.
So it's really important to us that we were able to have this opportunity this morning to meet with you and talk a little bit about who we are, what we've been providing to Canterbury and to the families for the last 98 years. We believe and we know that we provide value to families. It's been really important for us to work alongside the other NGOs and uranga tamariki to be part of the solution to supporting our communities and to strengthen. So on behalf of Chomley Children's Centre, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity today to partner with you and to present.
Thank you very much. That's a great insight into what you do, and even for the new councils, I'm sure they're picking up on the great work that you do. Thank you very much.
So next we have Kate and Josh will speak on behalf of the Christchurch City Mission regarding its outreach program, and here comes Gary.
If I could just have your patience for one minute. So Kate and Josh are going to come up and speak. We're going to do this three times a year, so they've got some really good stats to give you, but it's to give some reality about what's going on out there. So you're going to see this regularly, and should you want a longer presentation at some point, let us know and we'll organise that as well.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Kate, this is Josh, obviously we're from the Christchurch City Mission. So first of all, we just want to give our apologies for our lovely manager Melissa, who was going to be here to present today, but unfortunately she has Covid. So Josh and I's area of expertise is not necessarily in presentation, we are far more at home with our homeless community, so we're going to do our best to get through in the time we have. So I guess what we wanted to start off by saying is that when we talk about outreach or the inner city street project, what we're talking about is our homeless community, but we're not talking about a homeless community that is engaged with services, we're talking about those who are unable, are unable for whatever reason to be able to engage with services. So some of that is because of their mental health issues, some of that's because of their addiction issues. So the inner street city project is actually around us trying to engage with those that no one else can get to. So we would call it the top tariff or the top sort of 2% of what our homeless community would be. So in terms of numbers, there's about, we refer to them as our streeties or our homeless community going forward, just so you know. So there is around about 70 out there. Some of them we don't even see, so they would be our absolute hardest to get in touch with. So that's because they sometimes they would come out at night time, but you don't see them any other time, they might rifle through rubbish bins. They might rifle through rubbish bins and bits and pieces. So obviously we're working hard at trying to recognise and find them as well. However, I would say probably about sixty percent of our homeless community, we have developed really good relationships within, in the last six months. So a part of what we wanted to present today was we recognise that the systems and services that were out there to be able to accommodate for homelessness weren't working for our top tariff homeless people. So in the last six months, we've really changed our initiative in terms of how we try and engage with those people and have been recognising the reasons why they can't actually engage with services in the first place. So we talk about success as small measures. So things like them being able to accept a bottle of water from us without thinking that we have contaminated it in some way that we are trying to therefore control them or the government's trying to control them. So we're trying to make very, very small inroads over a very long period of time. And that's because those top tariff homelessness candidates are so severely unwell or suffering so badly from addiction that it's really difficult to actually get them to trust what we're doing. So we've implemented a new approach and that is that we work on the streets. So anything that we do is on the streets. Anybody that we need to bring out to deliver services goes to the streets. What we've done is changed the way in which we do things. So we are no longer trying to get our homeless community into buildings, into services to engage with them that way. What we're trying to do is create partnerships with those organisations that will actually accompany us on the streets into what we would consider the farri of our homeless community. So you will see from our little graphs that we were able to present that this initiative has created a significant change in the way that we are able to engage with and the engagement of our community, our homeless community. So hopefully you can, you can all see that. Sorry, I forgot my glasses today, so. Yep. So identify clients' needs, you will see here that the biggest identified client need is actually accommodation to a degree. I have stigmatism, so thank you, so I can still get it worked, I know. But thank you, I appreciate that. So accommodation is what has come up as the highest. I want to be very clear though, accommodation isn't necessarily the highest. So while we're doing outreach, it means that we don't actually necessarily have consent with our clients. So the information that we hold on our homeless community, we have to be very careful about. So what you see here in the graph is what they identify as their biggest needs. Our view of what the identified needs would be, would be around ninety-five percent mental health issues. But because we can't actually record that, because they haven't given us consent to hold that information, the stats that you will see is from their perspective in terms of what they have given us. Obviously we can talk to our experiences slightly different as well. So homelessness comes up as the most predominant need for them. You'll see in the next graph over, the services that we've referred to, which has actually significantly increased. And that's because we have managed to get some inroads with our homeless community. So the referrals that we do are those referrals that have been requested by our homeless community. So we're actually not asking them anymore what they want, we're waiting for them to tell us what they want. So we have had a much higher success rate in terms of our referrals, haven't we?
Yes.
Yeah, because we're not actually telling them what we think they need to do, we're waiting for them to tell us, which makes it, I guess, again, just listening to them seems to be able to make a huge difference. Yeah, John, you can talk about this one if you like.
Kilda, this is just the homeless areas frequently by myself and such, it's not around the whole of Christchurch at the moment, but mainly areas in our east, our Wolfston area, Sydnum, Sprayden and New Brighton. And some of the outskirts, obviously Hawswal and such. A lot of the resources that we've been giving out to our street people that are homeless on the street, that I've engaged with most mornings, who are our rough sleepers, we will give out a pack. Very similar to this one, which would have a sleeping bag, toiletries, what else do we have in here? Food, a portable radio so they can keep in touch with what's going on in the news, rat tests, hygiene, non-alcoholic hygiene, wipes and swags and sleeping bags is the main thing that we've been giving out.
So in terms of our resources, one of the things that we're trying to do is work really hard at being sustainable and environmentally responsible as well. So we have Josh here who actually is on the streets, you'll see him on the streets every morning at seven o'clock. So what he does is he gets out there first thing, hopefully before our streeties are hugely intoxicated, hopefully before, you know, those issues are starting to impact on us being able to have those conversations. So from that, it's actually allowed us to get more accurate understanding of who we've got out there as well because the true streeties are out there still sleeping at seven o'clock in the morning. The hustlers that come in to the city who may look like they are homeless, they sort of end up coming in around about the eight o'clock, eight-thirty. So it's been, it's allowed us to identify the areas that we need to be looking at and the people that we need to be looking at. In terms of the resources that we're giving as well, we're really working hard at trying to understand what they want rather than what we think they need. So we've moved to sleeping bags now rather than blankets. And that was because what we were getting told was actually they get wet, they get heavy, it's really hard for them to dry. So they tend to just leave them and walk off and just leave, you know, it looks like rubbish and stuff lying around. And when we got to the underlying reasons for that, what we could identify is that actually it wasn't because they didn't necessarily want them. It's because they're too heavy to lug around, especially when they were wet. So we've moved to a sleeping bag system which they can roll up in, they dry a lot quicker. So the resources that we're doing, we're also working at trying to get them to engage as well. So the backpacks, they only ever get one backpack. The stuff that's in the backpack can be replenished, but it means coming to us and disposing of their waste and then talking to us about what they need to put back in their backpacks. So every chance that we get to be able to engage with them is a chance to be able to actually build that relationship, build that trust, therefore they're more receptive to being able to actually, I guess, identify and change some areas of their life that is achievable for them. So lessons learned, trust is important. Our street people have a very long memory. They tend to be significantly unwell. So anything that looks like government, that looks like organisations, that looks like some sort of conformity for them is something that they really shy away from because they worry about being controlled. So in order for our project to work, we've had to really listen to that and understand where they're coming from in terms of what trust looks like and working with that relationship. So you will notice from our stats that we've put in our stats not what we think, but actually what they think. So that's part of us being transparent with them around the information that we do collect and what we're doing with that information. Walking alongside them is really important, so us thinking or suggesting that they need to be in a house isn't necessarily where they think they need to be. So understanding what their rationale was, why they're out there and what they consider to be the next step for them has been really important as well. I think previously we have decided that actually what's normal and right is for everybody to be in a house and that everybody wants to be in a house. What we've learned is that actually our streeties don't necessarily want to be in a house because there are traumatic events that have happened in houses or there are stresses in being able to manage a house that they're not prepared for. So it's about, it's for us, it's about taking that journey with them, understanding those small steps and taking those small steps so that eventually down the track, when they're good and ready, we can actually look at them going into that house space. The other thing we've been working really hard at is actually engaging with and having better understanding around what our businesses are going through because our streeties, obviously, you will see them camped in in doorsteps and doorways. Doesn't make for a good business sometimes. So we've worked really hard at being able to actually talk with our businesses, give them tips on how to, how to talk with our streeties, how to explain to them what their needs as a business is, but also being available to them, you know, to be able to talk through things, to be able to give advice. When they ring, we come round and see them. We talk to our streeties about, sort of negotiate around what the difficulties are for the businesses and try and get them to understand, but equally try and give the businesses, you know, that strength and support to be able to continue to actually do this day in and day out because it can get really difficult for them. So we make sure that we've got really good information going out to our businesses as well so that, like I said, they can give us a call. And being an outreach service, we like to be responsive as soon as possible. So we will get out there and do things as soon as possible, usually within a couple of hours of when we get our referrals come through. I guess in terms of our wider collective, I sort of touched on that a little bit beforehand and that was around us trying to engage with services that are willing to do things in a slightly different way. So we've recently been able to create a pilot process with Hiwakatapu which we're really excited about. So they're going to have one of their workers accompany us out on the streets so that when we're seeing significant mental health issues and/or somebody who has been impacted to the point of safety issues around their drug or alcohol intake, we've got somebody who's right there able to do that assessment with them and to encourage them with us to be able to, to address some of that immediate need. So we're really excited to see what that's going to bring in the next couple of months. We're working really hard at trying to get other organisations in the areas that we need support for our homeless community on board to take away from the appointment in a building process and instead actually come out and be part of the solution on the streets with us in an environment that our streeties can actually cope with. So in order, I guess, for us to continue doing this work, it's around all of us accepting and acknowledging that this is not something that we can do in isolation. Homelessness is a hugely complicated and complex challenge. And collectively as a community, it's going to take an approach from all organisation types and all social services types to be able to get the underlying issues addressed over time. So we are extraordinarily grateful to have the backing of the council to be able to get out there and do this mahi. It's not easy, it is, it is difficult and it means, it means putting ourselves out there sometimes in difficult situations. Josh was out there yesterday morning in the torrential rain and actually was wet until around, I think you dried out about one o'clock, didn't you?
Yeah, my socks were wet till about five. But yeah, it doesn't stop.
It doesn't stop. And I guess one of the other things that we are looking, that we are doing is that we, we run certain types of events for our homeless community as well. So next Friday, for example, we're doing a breakfast and that's, has two parts to it. One part is that, so we try and do this sort of every two weeks. The first part is to try and sober our homeless community up a little bit. So that helps for a little bit of sobriety, but it also helps to, again, build those relationships and it gives us a safe space for other community organisations to be able to actually come in and start that process of engagement with our, with our streeties as well.
Thank you, thank you very much, Kate and Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in, you know, we really appreciate what you guys do, you go above and beyond. I've been down and seen the first half of your building at Cross Road, is the second half open yet?
Not quite. We are thinking, I think in around about a month.
I think so.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
But we don't give timeframes because as soon as we give timeframes, we spit over the top of it.
Welcome to my world. And I'm really looking forward to the ongoing presentations that Gary said that you guys are coming up. So thank you once again for coming in and I'm sure everyone appreciates it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aikido. So now we've got some deputations for the OPP on item six, Otatahi Christchurch Organics Processing Plant. No, no.
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, yep. Public head body, each presenter will have five minutes. So we've got Paul McMahon, chairperson, will speak on the Waito Coastal Birwood Linwood Community Board. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you very much. Here Jackie Simon, so the head of the community board, she's going to start us off.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Last night I had the privilege of attending the community meeting for the organics processing plant that we hold every three months. At the beginning of that meeting, we were given a bit of a talk by the facilitator who was telling people to keep brain in their anger and keep it polite. This is because these meetings frequently get heated and I would like to note that, you know, staff do perform very, very well at these meetings in face of adversity. But when I'm looking at these people, I don't see the anger. I see what feeds the anger. And what is feeding the anger is that these people are frustrated, they are broken and they are traumatised by thirteen years of not being able to live as they wish within their own homes. Today you are going to be asked to progress the process for removing the organics processing plant to another site. And it looks like it'll be eleven months before it will come back for you to finalise the site. In this eleven months, I'd like to know what mitigation you're going to put in place so that these people are not further traumatised by the ongoing smell from this plant. We had five non-compliance notices over January and February. That is five occasions where it was recorded that the smell was so offensive that it required a non-compliance notice from ECAN. That doesn't count all the times that ECAN didn't get there in time. It doesn't count all the times where the smell was just below the threshold. It doesn't count all the times they had to cancel the barbecue. It doesn't count all the times that they can't get in the sparkle or actually just enjoy their lives. So you can say, you know, I go into the area and it's like for me visiting, it's like it's not that bad. It's not a ten for me when I go and visit there, it might only be a five. But when it's a five, day after day after day after day, when you've cancelled that dinner, that barbecue, that family event, you don't go to that local fair or whatever because of the smell, it becomes a ten because it's an ongoing pressure, it's an ongoing trauma, it's an ongoing unpleasantness. So I would like you also, when you're considering what you're going forward with in terms of the removal, I want you to actually put something in place for mitigation of what's going to happen while we're waiting for the move. It's going to be, you know, up to eleven months before you come back and say, okay, we've found a site. How much after that before it's actually closed and moved? Is it going to be another year after that? Another year? Are these people going to be stuck with this thing for one, two, three, four, five more years? One more year is too many. So I'd like you to, you know, when you're talking about this today, I'd like you to ask for a mitigation plan for the period between now and when it's closed and moved, right? And I'd just like to finish with a quote from one of the, one of our community members that was there last night. And he wants you to know, we are ordinary people who have lost joy in the quality of our lives. We are ratepayers and we have a fundamental right to breathe clean, fresh air. I'm asking you to act on behalf of this community. You are all we have. We can't, we can't litigate against you, we can't do anything, we have to rely on you to fix this for us. So I'd like to see an improvement for our community and a zero tolerance for any more non-compliances. Over to you, Paul.
When the council decided to put the organics processing plant in Bromley, it had an obligation to safeguard the wellbeing of its neighbours and to make sure the premises, the promises that were made were kept in terms of the resource consent. The council has failed repeatedly. So we're here today at the beginning of the end of a saga, hopefully, that is entirely the making of the council that has denied people of the quiet enjoyment of their own homes. We implore you today to prioritise an option that would resolve the issues most quickly. and that you commit to funding mitigation for the duration of the estimated three to four years before any new plant is operational, up to and including immediate closure of the plant. It's time for you, the democratic decision makers, to do the right thing for the social, economic, environmental and cultural wellbeing of the people of Bromley in the present and for the future. Thank you.
Okay, all done. Thank you.
I was looking at the timeline.
No, it's all right. Do you want to add any more?
It's gone on long enough.
I think Jackie's.
No, I'm prepared to give you a little bit more time to talk, you two, if you want, if you want to.
The thing is, is that this has been, this has been a very long time. And, you know, I understand that staff now have been given the char, the task of cleaning up the mess that's been made in the past. And I want to commend particularly Lynette for the work that she has been doing and for the progress that has been made. But this, this is, the legacy of this is ongoing and a basic breach of trust between people, the elected body that is supposed to be advocating for the community when that decision was made years ago and the commitments haven't been met. Another three to four years, this is, this is people's substantial portion of people's lives in retirement. Great, I really, I'm sure that you'll make a good decision today and move along the path. But this is another three to four years. I don't think it is fair that people have to wait for that period of time for relief. Now, I, I do not know what needs to be done to mitigate it, but at the moment, I think the only option is to close the plant immediately. And I, I ask the council to dedicate itself to resolving this quickly and properly and fully. Please.
Thank you very much. And I'm just speaking for myself. I'm sure that ninety-nine per cent of the people round this table agree with you. And just to put you in the picture, we are getting a report coming to us on the costs of if we do shut it straight away, what that will be. And we're going to work our way, the mitigation plan, as you're talking about, that is being prepared as we speak and it is coming to us so we can make a decision on that. We've just got to weigh up what it is and.
When do you expect?
Fully, fully respect what the residents have gone through and I agree it's taken far too long.
When do you expect you have the report?
You don't like putting times on things?
Very soon. It is, it has been prepared in front of us and it will be presented to us very soon. I'm sure it's in the next week, even if not this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in. Right, hope. Presentations of petitions, we have none. So, we will move on to item six, which is the organics processing plant public update. So, I'd ask Lynette to come up and talk to us, please.
Kira tato, I have Joe Vandenheven beside me, who is the head of procurement and is presenting the report to you later this afternoon. But today in the public update, we just wanted to do a very quick summary of where we were at. So, just to summarise, last year, there was an imprincible decision made to move the processing plant and the procurement process after some market engagement started in August and with an EOI, with an expressions of interest process, which was looking for a solution that would provide the following. There needed to be a site, a site that was consentable, a technology in order to process the organic material and ensure odour containment. There needed to be a market for the end product and we wanted to find, we want to find a reputable operator. So, the expressions of interest, we're now asking for solutions that provided all of that, a complete solution. That process has concluded and there were fifteen responses, which is a really good response. And they have been shortlisted to six suppliers. It should be noted that none of the, none of the proposed six involve the use of any council land, that includes the existing site. And the report this afternoon that Joe will present to you is requesting permission from staff to move to the next stage of the process and ask for proposals, competitive proposals from those six suppliers to conclude, sorry, lost my train of thought there, to conclude in a report to you that will provide you with all of the information about all of the proposals and a recommendation on a way to move forward. That will be later this year, early next year. It is a very long, complex process and we do definitely understand everyone's frustration around the length of time that that takes. What we are looking to do is ensure that that process is sound, is defendable and that we have no delays along the decision-making process so that we minimise the path forward, the time in the path forward.
Indeed, yeah. Just want to add that it's an indicative procurement timeline as it stands now.
So, yeah, if we can do it faster, yeah, we're doing everything we can to move it faster. As soon as we're ready to bring that report to you, we will be.
I'm happy to move this. Tim, have a second there. So, any questions of Lynette? Yeah, Kelly first, then Victoria.
Yeah, thanks Lynette. I wonder if it would be possible to touch on the complications of shutting the plant right now? Can you speak about things like that?
It will be a separate report that will be coming back and we will speak to that and we will ensure that as much of that report as possible is discussed in the public domain as well, like we did last time.
Fantastic.
Thank you, thanks Lynette. I appreciate that we have got another session on this later, but for the benefit of the public, can you confirm that the six that were shortlisted do cover all the key, four key elements that you've stipulated, that they're able to meet all of those?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Sam.
Yeah, thank you Lynette. And I just wonder, can you just clarify? Because I know in the past we've talked about direct appointment, but I just think it's useful to, if we can, discuss that now and sort of your comments around the timely ability to move this forward. Am I right in saying that effectively we sort of need to go through this next stage or else we would run the risk of a potential judicial challenge which may slow it down even further?
Absolutely, even further, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you, Sam. No extra call, Yanni, please.
Thanks. I just had two additional resolutions based on what we've heard this morning. One is noting the ongoing non-compliance notice, notices issued by Ecan in regards to the operations of the organics plant, that council requests staff to urgently bring back a report on what can be done to mitigate the offences and objectional odours until the plant is moved. Now, I heard you've said that there is a report coming. I think it would be very good for us to actually formally resolve to ensure that that does happen. And two, noting the loss of confidence in the community around the way in which the complaints have been handled by Ecan and CCC, the lack of compliance and the impact on people's quality of life, that the council seek an independent review with the community around how the plant has been handled.
Okay, so you have put those.
Yeah, I'm just, I'll email those through. I just wanted to ask staff around, so we've heard that there's a report coming. Do we know what the timeframe is for that report?
No, I'll have to come back and confirm it. Sorry, I don't know this morning.
Okay. And at the liaison group meeting last night, the community was advised from, by Living Earth that PDP were doing some odour assessments and that that report would be ready next week. Is that still?
It is part of the transition work that we are doing, not part of this procurement plan. And we did advise that we would be updating the community as soon as we could next week with all the information that was possible.
Right, I just, I think it's just because we've heard the deputations this morning, but we haven't heard anything that's been done to address the non-compliances. Is there anything that you can share with us today so the community can understand what's going on? Or do we have to wait until a future report?
I didn't come, I'm sorry, through the chair, I didn't come prepared to answer those questions today.
Yeah, I know you didn't, thank you Lynette. Pauline, one question please.
If I may?
Feel free.
If we were to request that you go down the track of providing information about any breaches by the contractor and also bringing back another report on further mitigation because I know that we've put a lot of mitigation in. Is that going to delay any work on bringing back what we've asked for on information around closure?
They'll be done in parallel.
That's a big piece of work on its own for you.
That, that, all of that work is happening in parallel anyway. Both pieces of work are coming back at the same time. So, we will be talking about the transition work in, in, in parallel to talking about the transition requirements for the plant because you can't talk about one without the other. So, that will.
So, in other words, what councillor Johansson's asking for to be put up there, you're already doing.
Yes.
So, there's another point, thank you.
I think, I think we just vote to receive the information on the report that you've done. The other train is going in a parallel line with it at the moment and what Yanni's asking for is well underway and coming out anyway. So, all I'm going to do is put the motion for what we see in front of us at the moment, receive the information in the report, I'll put the motion. All those in favour?
Hang on, hang on. Yeah, sorry, Yanni put.
You haven't sent them through yet, Yanni.
Yeah, I was just, sorry, I've just, I've sent them through just now.
Could just note that there's a transitional process.
I'm happy to do a notice of motion. If you, it's easier to do a notice of motion, that's fine, I'll do that if you don't want to do it today.
Just to be clear, what you're asking for is happening already at the same time. Is that correct, Lynette? Yeah, so it's happening anyway. I'm more than happy to put it in if it worries you that much.
We can do it as a noting item, may I? We can put it as a noting item.
Or put it as a noting item.
Right, and in terms of an independent review into how this whole situation has been handled, for those of us that were at the liaison group meeting last night, we heard about reviewing the terms of reference of the liaison group meeting. We witnessed firsthand the sheer frustration that everyone is having around how this whole issue is being dealt with. You know, I would like us to get an independent review like they've done up in the North Island around Farah's factory because I think it's the only way we're going to rebuild trust in our community is to get a degree of independence around how things are being handled. At the moment, it's not working.
I disagree with you. The only reason, the only way we can build trust in the community is move it and shut it. They're the two things. And both of those things are moving in a direction as fast as we can and I'll be pushing it as fast as I can, I'm right with you, I'm not arguing with you, to get that done. So, if I've put this motion and everyone said aye, no, anyone against? Were you against?
Debate or you just want to put it?
All we're doing is receiving it. If you want me to go back and do debate on it for you, I can, I'm more than happy to do that. Would you like to have a bit of debate?
Yes, please.
Follow away.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just be quick, recognising that there'll be a further opportunity to talk about the ongoing operations in the interim. So, just to say, look, I think the really important thing and, you know, I appreciate the mayor's touched on it, is that the community want this plant moved and they want it closed down in its current location. And I think this is another step along that journey. I think for some of us, we were hopeful that we could do this sooner and quicker. But also, I think, you know, I would rather that we do it properly and do it right to get the best outcome possible, rather than end up in a protracted process where we get issues cropping up later. So, I think although I'm disappointed that it's taking so long, I do appreciate the work, the diligent work that staff are doing to find what is the best solution going forward because we get one opportunity to do this right and do it properly and it's really important that we do that. But I do acknowledge that there is a huge amount of frustration, both for the time taken to come up with a solution but also the ongoing operations of the plant. And I welcome the opportunity for us as a council to discuss what we're going to do in the interim until the permanent solution can be put in place. Thank you to staff for the work that they have been doing on the future options, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Yanni. So, just to be clear, I'll re-put this, just so everyone's on the, now that Yanni's standing this debate. All those in favour of what's up there on the screen? Against? Thank you, Carrie. So, now we'll move on to item seven, the council donation towards the Cyclone Gabriel Relief Fund. I am more than happy to move this and Kelly is seconding it. Do we have anyone to present? I think we'll just put the motion because it's common sense. Yanni, would you like to?
Yeah, sorry, I just had a process question. I'm happy to support this, but as someone who's on the Mayor's Welfare Fund, I just want to check, does it need a formal resolution of the Mayor's Welfare Fund for this fund, for this funding to be made available from it?
So, we have the first meeting in the Mayor's Welfare on Friday. So, if, if the committee feels like, then they can make a resolution at that stage. But I've spoken to everybody on the, on the committee, they were all in favour of it. But to formalise it, we could do something on Friday if you feel more comfortable with that.
Well, sort of a legal question around the ability for council to actually make a grant from the Mayor's Welfare Fund outside of the committee actually making that call. Like I said, I'm really happy to support this. I just want to make sure that we are going through the proper process.
Can we just put in one approval grant subject to the committee approval?
If it needs it, that's the question.
Does it, I mean?
John?
Yeah, we sought legal advice on this and this question wasn't raised, but I'm, the, what I would want to avoid doing is delaying this process. So, if, if council feel there's belt and braces to put such an amendment, fine. It hasn't been raised. The only legal issue raised is just to make councillors clear we are going against the policy of the Mayor's Welfare Fund by offering a donation outside of Christchurch. Councillors are advised that this is due to exceptional circumstances and councillors wishing to assist the North Island in a time of great need and to check that there is no intention to change the criteria of the Mayor's Welfare Fund. So, that was the, the legal issue brought to this council. They were happy, you know, for an amendment made for a belt and braces approach.
I think belt and braces is, is good. Just for subject to the committees.
So, Mayor, if I could just ask Helen White, our head of legal, just to be absolutely clear in terms of whether council has the authority to take this decision because I believe you do have. Helen?
Yes, I can confirm they do, that council does have the authority to do that for the reasons as explained by John Fassell in terms of that this is effectively the parent of a subsidiary body of council that is appointed by this council.
Okay. Tim?
I think it would be good for the, just for the committee to ratify their decision because you contacted all of them, they're all, they're all in favour of it. So, rather than getting into pedantic and bureaucracy, I think we should just get forward and get moving.
Victoria?
Given that it's a breach and a departure from the policy, I think it's appropriate that it does come here and I'm comfortable with that departure and the interpretation of a wider sense of community. I'm just really mindful of the extraordinary relief and assistance that we received in our time of need and this is a welfare fund and we're going to be contributing to the welfare. And I'm comfortable with that departure, but I acknowledge and I'd support some sort of ratification as well.
Okay, just hang on one sec. Yeah, so we're just putting that in there. It's a good point, Yanni. Okay? All good, bud? So, right, one thing I will say and I might get before I put this is the deputy mayor had, sorry, I'm sorry under bus here, Pauline. You had some information that what we could maybe think of going forward. Would you like to just share that with us?
An email that came through this morning from a.
Which, this has got nothing to do with what we're voting on, it's just, right.
No, but we could maybe try and pick this up if there was a will to defer to our staff. No, but we could maybe try and pick this up if there was a will to defer to our staff advice on how to take this forward. And she said her family and, and who lost their home in Bexley during the first earthquake. We were one of fifteen fortunate families to be gifted a trip to Napier Hawks Bay, which was initiated from their city council to provide respite during a difficult time, and Air New Zealand and much of the community rallied around to make this possible as well. And we will be forever grateful. Is the city council, Christchurch City Council currently in a position to return this favour to the area during their time of need? I would be more than happy to help with whatever I can, if so, for example, finding donations, et cetera.
Wondering if we wanted to pick that up and take it forward somehow. John to comment, please.
Yeah, I, we have, uh, had a lot of requests and a lot of offers. The, uh, NEMA and the Emergency Management Services have repeatedly asked that we refer such ideas and such offers through to them so they can, uh, manage the, uh, the totality of the response. They feel it's a, uh, a, a lot more, uh, a, a lot more joined up and a lot more effective if, uh, if we work through them and consider these, uh, these issues. So rather than each authority and each decision-making body, uh, offering separate, uh, uh, separate support, it's challenged, uh, channeled through a, a central process, which is what we're following here.
So it's a part of the learnings that we've, they've taken from our situation, and we've refined it down. I guess the only opening I'm thinking here is whether we could perhaps communicate with Air New Zealand and suggest that they partner with one of the funders to provide something like this, should there be a need.
So just a suggestion, John, please. Uh, I think it's very helpful what the deputy mayor has described. I think it would be useful, because the central collection point makes absolute sense, that if council is minded to be supportive of such an approach, that we tell NEMA that, that we're supportive of that, and therefore could they act on the, the very generous offers that are being made from people within Christchurch. So that you still keep the central contact, but we're putting our weight behind that.
Absolutely.
Erin, do you have a wee question on it?
Yeah, I, I have a fear around that, that when things get moved into a big central vacuum, that the, uh, the intent of this gets lost, and I think it's very easy for us as a council to set up a, a small working group under the mayor or deputy mayor or whoever, that just helps facilitate it. It's a, it's a very simple offer, that we become a respite place for people up there that have lost their homes, they could be staying in emergency, so they bring their family down, they stay in Christchurch for a weekend. Uh, they'd either have donated accommodation or be, uh, stay with families. There'd be a tonne of families would open their door in this city because of what people did for us. I own a tourist-related business, I would give free passes, probably nearly every other one in the city would do the same thing. It'd be very easy to put together and then can be done through the council or whatever up there and just say, hey, families that need a respite to get away from just looking at destruction all the time. People did it for Christchurch, and I think we should do the same. San Francisco did it for us, we never understood it at the time, but now we do. And they're doing it a hundred, over a hundred years later. They still, every time a major city around the world gets an earthquake, they put their, they put an invite out and say, we will tell you what will go wrong. They told us, we said, no, you're wrong. We, we will recover a lot quicker than everyone else and we'll do these, they were exactly right. Um, and, uh, and so we should take this offer up and we should run with it, rather than centralising it, and I think it'll get lost. But that's all.
Thank you, Erin. And now, I, I, I just brought that up because, uh, Pauline showed me just before we walked in here, and I think it's a good thing that we should discuss going forward. This is not what we're voting on at the moment, but I just wanted to put it out there. So, okay, so I'll, I'll put this, what's written in front of us right at the moment, which has got the ratification bit in it. All those in favour? Against? Carried, thank you very much. So we now move on to item eight. Welcome.
Put your mic on, that's it.
We're here to discuss the Gloucester and Hereford parking changes, but we just wanted to give you a little bit more background as to where they came from. So in August last year, transport operations were informed of the museum closure and the details of the proposed site operations during the works that were being undertaken at the museum, um, which included a compound area taking over some of the large, um, shared space in front of the museum. So we had concerns over that, given the number of users that, um, that use the shared path daily. We also have ongoing complaints over the shared path and the behaviour of users due to the numbers using the path. Um, and then lastly, we had ongoing complaints about the crossing of Park Terrace at Salisbury Street. So we wanted to make sure that we could operate the street safely for all of our road users while the museum works were being undertaken with the most minimal disruption to all road users also.
Happy to move.
Right, Erin's happy to move it, and Sarah, thank you. Sarah's seconded it. Right, do we have any questions? Any question? Nope. Sorry, Jake? Yep?
It's just, can you just do me clarity, obviously we're deciding on the, the Rolleston and, um, Gloucester, the parking changes there. Uh, it's just so I'm clear, sorry, it's, for information, you've included the, uh, the, um, the roading layouts for Rolleston. I just wanted to know what, just really the intention of that was, we're not making any sort of decision on that.
Yes, so, um, as we finish the presentation, we, um, are proposing to make changes to Rolleston Ave to support the, the users during the build of the museum. And through, um, engagement with some stakeholders in the area about the plan, we had specific requests, uh, especially from Christ College around P three parking, pick-up, drop-off at school times, um, and the coach, coaches that they use to take the kids off-site for sport. So that's where the Gloucester Street parking changes came from.
Yeah, I'm clear on all those. It's just, it's just the infom- the FYI paper around the Rolleston Ave, it's just, I've found it just quite irregular that they've been, it's interesting, but you know, but why it's attached to another item that's not really, it's in the vicinity of, but it's not what we're deciding on.
So a- all the works are linked together?
And the reason we're doing the works on Rolleston Ave is, as Gemma said, due to the museum works.
Yes.
Um, and that's all getting done under a TMP. And due to a recent paper that we brought to council previously around doing works under TMP, we thought we'd be try and provide more background on, on why we're doing this. Um, so the works on Hereford and, um, Gloucester, they're supporting the works outside the museum. So we're coming to you to ask for a decision on that today, to formalise that. The TMP that the museum's putting in is going to start, when's that starting, Gemma?
I will start construction on the eighth, April the twelfth.
April the twelfth, so we need to, so they're putting that TMP in irrespective. So we're giving you a heads up of the works that we're proposing as part of that TMP. But we're also committed in, in the report that we're going to come back to council for full decision on the, um, wider TMP works later in the year. But we need to get something in ASAP to enable the works at the museum. We will be coming back to council for a decision, a final decision on the Gloucester Street project.
Thanks, I'm, I'm fine with what's on the table, but just thought, I had a few more questions around the thing that we're not deciding on that was included. But I imagine there'll be a workshop or something then around that sort of stuff, will there?
We'll, we'll definitely be coming back to council for that.
Okay, we can take that offline, thank you.
Okay, so, sorry, had, had you finished your, you hadn't, had you?
Right, but that's all right.
No, no, carry on, we'll wait till the end, sorry.
So as part of the, um, yeah, supporting works for the museum, we have contacted all directly affected stakeholders. Um, and we've discussed the plan with Tafachi Order, uh, the Emergency Services, ECAN as bus operators, and with spokes because a lot of the users on Rolleston Ave are cyclists. Um, the engagement outcomes from that, um, exercise was most, uh, all of them were generally in favour of the Rolleston Park Terrace works. The, the P three parking and coach stops on Gloucester Street were following discussions with Christ College. Um, the new coach pick-up, drop-off base were just on Hereford Street, were to support tour operators that, um, would no longer be stopping on Rolleston Ave outside the museum. And the Art Centre requested some additional wayfinding because the new, the existing zebra crossing would be relocated for a safer crossing point.
So Emma, welcome to council. Let's hope they treat you well. It's scary sitting in front of you lot sometimes, you know, guys.
So, yeah, we're gonna carry on discussing it with stakeholders, and we start works on April twelfth.
Some of us are actually nice. And he's not one of them. So, so, sorry, have you, have you, have you?
Now we're finished.
Right, thank you. So we've got Yanni and Victoria.
Can we stick to the topic?
Uh, thank you. Um, just in terms of Gloucester Street and the school bus onlys for Christ College, will other schools be able to use those bus stops? Um, and also, could other coaches like the cruise ship buses use them as well? I'm just concerned, like, from what I've seen down there, that we still seem to have a shortage of coach parking. Um, and other schools that come in to use, like the Botanic Gardens, have, I think, not been able to park where there's coaches for cruise ships. So, yeah, I was just interested in the school bus one, and whether there's any consideration to who uses it and how.
Yes, so the school bus stop can be used by other schools. Um, we've tried to keep it so that it's only operating as a school bus during school time, so outside of that, anyone can park there, especially overnight or for other events around the place. Uh, cruise ships, I'd have to ask them.
Yeah, cruise ships wouldn't be able to stop there, or cruise ship buses wouldn't be able to. But, um, we're nearing the end of the cruise ship season, and we're going to be doing a lot of work with our partners like Christchurch NZ and the Cruise Association to better plan for next year of how to allocate spaces for cruise ship buses. So there will be a lot of work going in in that space over the next few months.
Uh, thank you, thank you, and we've got Victoria, please.
Thank you, I promise to be really quick. Um, I can see from the proposal that you lose some parks and you gain some parks. What was the net effect of parking from this proposal?
Three car parks.
Lost?
Lost three, yeah.
And the other thing I wanted to, um, just have a quick chat about was in relation to the engagement, it's great to see all that engagement with your businesses there, uh, early engagement with stakeholders. Are there residents in the area as well, and have you applied the same approach to the residents as you have to the businesses?
So we identified four residents, um, that face Park Terrace, but their access comes off our street, so we haven't door knocked them as yet, but we can follow that.
And can I just check on the time of year that you did this engagement with this community?
Um, we started in December and it's still ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you for questions. Have you finished any debate? Good as gold, right, I'd like to, um, move that motion, all those in favour? Against? Thank you, carried. So we've got the and so to item nine, and I'm happy to remove this, because this is common sense, still have a second, uh, thank you, Jake. Any questions, any debate? Right, I put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? Carried, thank you.
Second?
Righto. So we're gonna, Sarah, Sarah's moving it, and Erin's seconding it.
That's twice.
Right, so we've got no questions, we've got no debate, I'll move, oh, righto.
Right, we have a staff presentation. If needs be.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, there's lots of them coming up. Southard Street.
It's after, yeah, number ten.
You've escaped, you're all right.
Okay, welcome.
My name is Corinne, I'm the project manager for Southard Street, and this is Laura, she's the planner from the urban region team that has been starting the project. Um, do I work it, or?
We've just got some slides, so if you can get them up.
Okay, so we had, Sarah, you have a question? Okay, righto, righto. So shall we listen to the presentation? Okay. Please proceed.
I'll be brief.
No, 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 we've got all day.
So I'm just gonna run through the project scope and engagement and communication for the project. And, um, basically, um, in December twenty-two, I briefed the Waipapa Pupit in a central community board on the project, and I'm now bringing it to council for a decision under plan A due to the location of Southard Street. Um, project scope. Um, we're basically playing, planning on planting six new trees alongside Southard Street, two within the existing berms. Um, one acer on the north side of the street and one smaller magnolia on the south side of the street. Um, we also plan on planting four, um, acers built into tree pits will be built, um, as tree pits built out into the road with landscaping underneath. Uh, where we can, we are aimed to increase tree canopy, um, without impacting on existing car parking arrangements. However, with the locations, we are, um, quite restricted to underground and overground infrastructure that's in place on the road, it's quite a busy narrow street. Much of the on-street parking on Southard Street is, um, not delineated by painting of, um, individual spaces. Um, and to create the new tree pits, we will need to take over, uh, car parking spaces currently available for four car parks. Um, two of these on the north side of the road in P sixty areas, and two of them on the south side of the street. Uh, we undertook a parking survey that showed us that the average uptake of the street space of parking has not exceeded sixty percent. So that gives us some confidence that the removal of the car park spaces will not have a significant impact on the actual, um, functioning of the street itself. Um, I hand-delivered letters to local businesses on the twenty-first of December, went down, had a chat to lots of people on the street. And they provided, were able to provide feedback until the sixteenth of January, and overall, we, it was very positive. We did receive, uh, written feedback from Dun's Accountants and Business Advisors, um, after I'd spoken to them, and they expressed concerns about the leaves that would litter their car park, and questioned how large the trees would grow. Um, I responded, um, saying that the, uh, council would maintain, um, the trees accordingly. Um, and leaves would be cleared to, uh, have minimal inconven- um, inconvenience. Um, because of the nature of the area and the tree pit design themselves, the trees would not grow to a really big full height. Um, and would still provide adequate tree cover. Um, we also received some informal feedback when visiting the businesses, and three businesses expressed they were very happy with the proposed tree plantings. And one expressed, um, concerns about the removal of the car park, which was the cafe at the end of the street. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so there were, oh, we got questions. Victoria, yes, please.
Can I just check on the timing again in relation to, um, the engagement with the businesses? The twenty-first of December to the sixteenth of January is an incredibly busy time for a great deal of people. Was, was, was there pre-engagement prior to that, and were you happy with the level of response that you've got? Because I can't see from that how much actual response you got in relation to the letters that you sent out.
Yeah, I went down personally and hand-delivered the letters. There were still lots of businesses operating within December, the street was very busy. Uh, lots of people in the cafes. Um, Southard Street has lots of studios, so, um, there's tiny little businesses within one area. Um, where I could, I just explained to the staff that were there, a lot of them are tenants within the business, so they were happy to pass the letters on to um, the tenant, the landlord, or whoever that might be as well, and they put notices up within the staff boards, and I'm happy they were overall very positive about the
I really just want to, um, make the comment in relation to timing of consultation with businesses, it's a really busy time of year. Um, and whether that's good practice or not, perhaps it's a conversation for another day.
Thank you, Erin?
Um, yeah, my only question around this, and I happen to be the seconder, um, because introducing street, trees to here makes perfect sense, but why are we going for trees that don't grow that big when we want to encourage, increase our tree canopy? Like, I would have thought we'd put in something that could grow as big as possible, like a beach or something, like.
The street, the street itself is quite narrow there, so if we have a very large canopy, it's gonna shade too much in the street as well. I don't know whether, James, you can provide, James, the arborist on the project?
Pretty restricted there with services as well, so there's big, um, penetration issues as well with services, and also boundary cut packs and can, carriageway cut packs as well. So we're just trying to find a balance between what can grow there and, and sort of future maintenance issues as well, so just trying to find a
So, how do those cities that are slightly busier than ours, like Sydney and New York and that, that have really large trees in their street, how do they get on?
Perhaps, perhaps I can answer that. Um, council have quite a bit of experience in managing street trees in larger cities, particularly Melbourne. Um, the arborists work to choose the right tree for the right location. So if you're seeing big trees, it's because it's the right location. You do have the problem sometimes where they have been planted poorly in the past, and there is significant ongoing maintenance problems. What we're trying to avoid those maintenance problems was the choice of species these days. Looking at the space that's there, the underground services, the overground services, to get that right tree for the location.
So we get an assurance that everywhere, you'll go the biggest tree you possibly can to increase the canopy cover? Brilliant, absolutely.
We have calculated that we will, uh, when the trees get to We have calculated that we will, uh, when the trees get to mature size, they will reach the twenty percent canopy cover target.
Okay, thank you, Jake.
Thanks for that. Just, just something that you said there, I, I'm just keen to know this. Falling leaves is usually a, a common concern from people and it obviously creates some optics for us as council. Maybe this is a really silly question, but I've always wanted to know, why don't we put in evergreen trees? Why do we put deciduous ones on?
Evergreen trees still drop debris just all year round.
So some more than others?
Yeah.
So are these evergreen then?
No, they're deciduous.
Okay, then why do we pick trees that drop more?
Uh, evergreen trees, because it's just the nature of the, we want the, the shade in the summer and then the, the light through in the wintertime. If we plant evergreen trees, you can get overshading during the winter period as well. So it's just.
Okay, so it's a trade-off that we're comfortable with. All right.
Yeah, yeah, just trying to find balance.
Okay, we're now moving in. Question there?
Um, so I've forwarded people through a response that I'd had on the type of tree and the growth and bits and pieces, which is good. I just noticed the difference between, uh, the, the comment you made about the fact that we're going to be restricting their growth from the tree pit and bits and pieces. So I just want to clarify, because the, the email said that they will grow twelve metres tall by six metres. Or is that what they could grow, but we're going to restrict them more?
Uh, that's the optimal size I'll grow. They can grow bigger than that, but.
Oh, okay. So that's what we're sort of roughly aiming for.
And the tree pit design that we've, um, that will stop them growing too big.
Oh, no, that's really cool. Thank you.
Okay, so we're now moving to the debate, debate department. Yanni, you had a debate?
Oh, no, I had a question just about the, the cost. Like, um, it seems quite high, eighty thousand dollars for just tree pits and trees. So can you just, like, advise why it seems so expensive?
There's quite a lot that goes into the tree pit design as well. We've also got, got to consider traffic management, traffic man, management to actually, um, put them in. We've also got establishment of the trees themselves. So within the budget is included, um, two years of maintenance for the trees, um, watering, pruning, that kind of thing, um, outside of the budget after that, that, that's different. Um, that's how much it costs to, to get.
So how much does the tree pits cost each?
It's about six, seven thousand. Yeah, about six, seven thousand per tree pit. Um, and then obviously contractors to.
Traffic management.
Traffic, traffic management is a lot, especially on that street because it's quite small and narrow.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear what you said. Did, how much a tree pit is it?
Probably about six, seven thousand per tree pit. Just for the tree pit itself.
Okay, um, and Melanie?
Um, I was just.
Oh, sorry. She didn't quite finish the answer. Includes the installation. It's not the.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Melanie?
Um, I was just wondering, uh, during the year when the R A students are at R A, because I presume that they're pretty much finished then in December and they would park down there. Do you know if the parkings use more during the year?
Sorry, I.
Is, is the parking followed during other points of the year other than December?
Uh, I, um, this, the parking analysis we did was only in the December. We did it on a Tuesday night and a Saturday as well to encompass kind of both. But I, I wouldn't know about the rest of the year. It, it seems pretty consistent down there. And there's a Williams Corporation residential, um, being built in the area as well along the street. Um, that obviously doesn't have any parking, um, for its residents. And they are short-term car parks. They're not all-day car parks. They're fifteen minutes or sixty minutes that we're removing and just four of those. There are still, there is still parking on the street and Manchester and Madras as well.
Thank you, thank you. So we're now in debate. Who would like to debate?
I'll just wind it up then.
I thought, I thought you were going to debate before. All those, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie, thank you very much. Item eleven.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move item eleven because I'm assured that it's only housekeeping. Sam's seconded it. Item eleven. You got a question? Okay. No, 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 be.
I, I'm just trying to understand why the delegations weren't, there's two parts to this question. Why the delegations weren't granted in the first place? Was it because it was an oversight or was it designed as a checks and balances? And I suppose the second part of that question then is if it was checks and balances, how do we as governors know when we are tracking behind on some of our essential timelines? If these matters had to come to us at the table for approval and they'll be no longer coming to us for approval, how do we as governors have eyes over some of these essential timelines?
So in the context of, uh, one of the delegations for extension of time, um, the R M A prescribes that council has two years from notification to make a decision on any plan change. Um, that currently sits with council to approve that and a decision was made last year in respect of a plan change regarding noise installation near roads and rail corridors that we would go beyond two years and to, that would seek approval for, from council, which was given. The, um, we propose regular reporting to council of progress on plan changes and the timing of those by way of a briefing. Um, and we'll continue to do so. Um, the, in terms of an example that we're dealing with at the present time, that same plan change, I mentioned that council gave a approval for extension beyond the two years and we subsequently wrote to the minister who granted that extension. Um, the pa, the hearings panel, it seems likely to require another month. So we'd need to go back to the minister and to go, to come to council and this instance again for something that is procedural, uh, we can more efficiently deal with as a delegation. So it's on those grounds that we're seeking the delegation. But certainly to assure you, we're proposing regular reporting to council.
Yeah. Look, I understand it from an efficiency perspective and I suppose the point then is that in terms of, um, just keeping us eyes over it when it comes to reporting, that we are kept up to date on some of those timing issues. You've just been fully assured of that by my officer.
Thank you, thank you. So no more questions. Shall I shout? Yes, we have. Um, I'll put that motion. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie, thank you very much. Now we zip all the way back to item five. The Bexton National Water Management Zone Committee Minutes. Tim, Tim's happy to move it and Sarah's happy to second it.
Sorry, Tim.
So I'll put that motion. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrie, thank you. Now, mayor's report, which once again you've read from cover to cover and it's a one pager today. And Kelly's happy to move it. And.
Questions.
Questions, Sarah? Of me?
I know. I'm just like one of those, um, things where the mayor has the, um, the great privilege of representing council at a whole pile of sort of more formal and official meetings. And I'm just wondering, you know, like the Regional Transport Committee, for example, how that's going and how we're making sure, like we did last term, that, that the views that are being represented and those kind of things are kind of the, the official council views, that kind of stuff. And so feedback on, from those meetings would be useful and like, how do we get that?
I can, I can make you a copy of it, but one thing I can say is foremost and centre on just about every page you read in those, uh, in that committee is get rid of greenhouse gases.
Yeah.
As, as much as we can.
Yeah.
And I'm pushing, when I go there, I'm pushing about, um, transferring, uh, the fuel of buses or things like that to something else. Getting more electric buses, getting hydrogen buses, all sorts of things. Because that's the way I think as far as, because as you know, fifty-six percent of our greenhouse gases come from transport and about thirty-five from.
From the vehicle fleet, yeah.
Things with wheels on. So I think the quicker we zero in on those things and using, um, to put pressure on E C A N to, uh, modify some of their buses, the ones they've got or, or every new one will always be electric, but we're pushing in on that.
So, so in that space, maybe we should have a chat about the, the evidence base for the transition. So in my, with my portfolio head on, because the, the transition to those, um, other fuels um, isn't likely to make a significant impact soon enough um, by all of the evidence that's been provided through the Climate Commission and those kind of places. So making sure that you're also representing that, um, official council view on mode shift and those kind of things too.
Yes, I could do that for you.
Yeah, yeah, for the council, because the, the role of the mayor is to represent the council view on those things.
Yes, not, not necessarily.
Pushing the hydrogen kind of thing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And if we can, maybe before the next R T C, maybe have a, another catch-up like we did before the first one.
Absolutely. No, no, we'll have you that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sam?
You, you're still seated on the sixth floor and your door was always open.
Yeah, well, you don't know when the R T C meetings. Okay, fair enough. No problem. Yanni?
I'm sure that's easily fixable now.
Easily fixable. Yeah, Yanni?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just had two questions. One is, do we know if the SURF agreements have been signed yet? Has there been any conversation with government over the SURF projects that we've, you know, remember we had the pressure to make sure that they were signed and delivered. And the second question is, do we have any information around the announcement that government made last week around the funding of public transport in Christchurch? Because to the best of my knowledge, we haven't had anything through. But it would be good to understand what impact that would have on things like our draft annual plan, which is out for consultation. Um, and possibly the deliverability in terms of other projects.
So my officer Lynette is not in the room at the moment. She's just nipped out. We can just give you a written response to that, councillor Johansson.
That's, and that's in relation to the one that Minister Wood did on Friday at the Bus Exchange. Yeah, the, the ink is.
I'm not expecting.
The ink is still wet on that and Lynette is trolling away through it and getting it sorted now. So as soon as she knows, you'll know. Oh, you had two questions, didn't you?
I have to second.
Oh, I said, oh, I said, okay. I thought we'd done all that. Yeah, we had to move in a second, eh? Yeah, we did.
Move on.
Right, all those in favour? All those against? Thank you, Carrie. So we will now.
Move to P X.
Move to P X and then we'll have a cup of tea. Oh, Lynette, you just missed a bullet there.
We'll deal with it. So a resolution.
We'll now, we'll now resolve to exclude the public as set out in papers eighty-seven and eighty-eight of the agenda. All, thank you, Sam. I'm happy to second it. All those in favour? Thank you. Cup of tea. See you in. Phil, can we, um, flip those?